This is the San Luis County and Los Angeles County Commissioners, regular meeting. Today's Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please rise from your locations by Commissioner Bob Lucero, followed by the federal divisions by Commissioner Tony Hux.
Heavenly Father, as we gather today, we ask for your guidance and wisdom in our discussions. Help us to listen to each other with open hearts and minds and to work together for greater good. May our words be thoughtful and our actions be guided by your love. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Lord, we worship the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and every justice. Thank you, Commissioners. Welcome, Mr. Dorycap.
Commissioner Searle.
Here.
Commissioner Hess.
Here. Commissioner Lewis. Here. Approval of the agenda, Mr. Dorycap, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain the motion.
I approve the agenda. Second motion.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Searle.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes. Thank you. On section two, we have the regular meeting minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Commissioners, we have had the opportunity to read those. Are there any additions, additions, or any comments on those minutes? Hereina, I will entertain a motion.
We approve the regular meeting minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Second.
Commissioner Searle.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Yes. Reading of correspondence, Commissioner Community Reports, Commissioner Lucero, would you like to go first, sir?
Sure. On October twenty-fourth, I attended a meeting in Plamen, Colorado, to sit in on some interviews with the consultants proposing to do the Eastern Plains Renewable Energy Impact Study, which is being funded through the Department of Local Affairs. There was two consultants, I think it had been narrowed down from four. The two consultants were EnergyF and SWCA. They both did their presentations and it was a consensus at the end of the meetings that we hired EnergyF to be the consultant on this project. I think it will start in January, I think is what they're proposing on that. On the twenty-ninth, I think my fellow commissioners were all in on this meeting with the DHS to discuss the possible food drive due to the government shutdown and impact on SNAP benefits. Those discussions are still ongoing as we speak. And on the thirtieth, we had a meeting with the Noxious Weed Committee, State Noxious Weed Coordinator, to discuss the future retirement of Donna Albertson with the NRCS. She's the one that's been doing a lot of the work on the African root, which is this day weed. At this point, we're not sure if they're going to, the Pre-Tardor Soil Conservation District is going to hire another sprayer or what they're going to do. I think they've had, I think they're going to have a meeting on August last Thursday or this coming Thursday to decide on that. So, and then also that the grant is out for the Noxious Weed Program. I think it was out on probably November first. I think it was questioned whether they were going to apply for the grant through the Pre-Tardor Soil Conservation District. If they were going to apply, I think Phil informed them to let us know so we can apply for that grant. But that was my report.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hess.
On the twenty-second, I attended the health board meeting. They talked about funding shortages in their departments, much like all the other departments of the county. And they expect flat funding from both, from both camps, where from Los Angeles County. So they're looking for alternative funding and grants and et cetera. A lot of all, a lot of the programs are suffering because of budget cuts, however, due to the good budgeting they're anticipating moving out. And one confirmed measles in La Vida, individual traveling through from Utah. There has also been four outbreaks of hand and mouth licks. And children's symptoms include blisters on the hand and feet and fever or other cause. On the twenty-third, I attended the Southeast Plains Energy Impact Study, also addressed Senate Bill twenty-four-two-twelve, questions and concerns involved regarding citing and promoting clean energy projects while delivering affordable energy resources and mapping the increase in demand. Challenges identified, limited window of time before tax credits disappear, lack of consistency in terms of fees and timelines and specific timeframes, and no base load of resources south of the convention plan in that global. On the twenty-seventh, I am a member of the United Wolf Coalition Board. This weekly call is to recognize and contribute feedback to the ongoing effort to support wolf impact in Colorado communities, producer landlords, and county communities in response to the wolf reintroduction program, to coordinate efforts and develop a unified strategy across the state unit with the wolf reintroduction. Question on legality of Canadian wolves being brought here to Colorado. It looks like they secured these wolves without going through proper processing. And then on the twenty-eighth, I was invited to attend a meeting, a roundtable, to discuss the latest announcement regarding beef procurement from Argentina and other concerns. Members present were Senator Bennett, Commissioner Bag, Kate Greber, Kurt Russell, President of Colorado Cabela's, Corey Kissinger, Cal- let's see, Colorado Livestock Association President, Kane Rogers, vice chair of the National Cabela's Association, Chad Frankie with Rocky Mountain Farmers Union, Carla Curry, President of Colorado Farming Club, Jay Van Leefel, House President of Colorado Cabela's Association, Aaron Sparr, vice chair and director of CCA and Luplos in Orway Theaters and Director of CLA. The potential importation of Argentinean beef has stirred significant concerns among cow calf producers. However, economists believe the impact to consumers who buy beef at the grocery store will be minimal. After the remarks the president made last week, the cap prices, like cap prices, dropped significantly hurting the ranchers and benefiting the packer monopoly with no change at the grocery store. This undermined the recovery of the US cattle herd, which the numbers of these cattle raised in the US is at its lowest number since nineteen fifty-two. High US beef prices are largely attributed to a record low domestic supply and rising input costs for the increase in prices. Senator, my comment to Senator Bennett, he looked at everybody wanting to know the possible solutions to the problem. And I told him, Senator Bennett, if you want to help ag rural counties and even solve the SNAP issue, pacify your farm bill. We're operating on a two thousand eight farm bill and things have changed since two thousand eight. On the thirtieth, the Commissioners attended Colorado Department of Ag in Los Angeles County. Pat York, the Colorado Department of Ag, was concerned with Los Angeles County weed program. She had heard of Donna Albertson and submitted her retirement. Donna would help her Mr. Lucero and work diligently to get the Leaky Spurge and African root both. This egg, noxious wheat, along with many other meats such as thistle and apple, under control of eradication. Mrs. York was wanting to know what Los Angeles County plan was to address the vacancy when the Soil Conservation District does the hiring to fill that position in Los Angeles County helps with the percentage of that cost if the positioning, with the positioning, equipment and other items needed to fulfill the duties. On the twenty-ninth, Los Angeles County Food Drive, we met over at the Department of Human Services, Los Angeles County team was trying to keep this from becoming an emergency. Federal and state grants have been reduced by twenty-five percent and needs have increased by twenty-five percent in the last six months alone. Many of those in need are two-income families struggling to make ends meet, approximately three thousand people out of the counties, the county of fourteen thousand two hundred residents who buy on SNAP. Struggles and challenges extend beyond food. The other struggles are with eating cost and transportation. And I asked about the travel stipend and they said food could eat is fully funded. Then on the thirty-first, I attended a revegetated legislative meeting. This, we, we had a meeting with different individuals that wanted to push forward a re- revegetation piece of legislation, which would put the onus on the, on the producer of the energy or the vapor of the water, the Mayfair Water Rights, to make sure that those properties, that the water comes off of are fully vegetated before the water leaves the property. And this would ensure that there would be vegetation on those properties and avoid the buying and driving that would happen in crowded county. The bill would retain the water of the property alone enough to establish and maintain a cover crop, the water shares after sold to a purchaser. The purchaser would have to establish the property before all the water shares would be removed. And it would all be, also be subject to unit management. The local land use authority would also be watching the process and also have the oversight authority for a period of fifteen years, all this to avoid that buying and driving. And that's my report, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate all that advocacy in the county of San Luis County. One of the, obviously some of the meetings we've attended, the Colorado Behavioral Health Administration created the Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization, BHASO. And so we had a inaugural meeting on October twenty-third, where Region One, which is the largest region in Latinas throughout the state of Colorado, met together. I was obviously part of the advisory council board that met. And one of the, one of the discussions that I think was surprisingly very welcome is, I come from the perspective that behavioral health is impacting just by everyone in the state of Colorado. And so my perspective came from the agricultural community, living in Aurora County and Frontier County. My comments were that I believe that the Al community has been so stressed by the legislative measures that are coming out of the General Assembly, that we need to pay attention to what's happening on the behavioral health for the Al community. And so that was almost surprisingly news to the group. But I tell you one thing, it was a very robust, the first meeting that we have had, we're going to have continuous meetings and I will continue to advocate for this region. We have from San Luis County, Tuau County, Fremont County, all the way to the western slope and that goes all the way to Moffett and Rio Blanco Mesa. I know those counties part of this Region One. The opportunity to make an impact, I have been asking the DHS for years now, since they came into existence, to pay attention to what's happening in rural Colorado. And the promises have been made and the promises have not been kept. So now that, by the way, Mr. Michael Herro, DHS and I both selected to serve on this particular entity, which we're going to have a pretty strong voice here from the DHS perspective. And I, as I introduce the agricultural impacts that our community is having. So we will keep you posted on that. One of the, one of the things that this is, we have to determine what services need to be established to have continuum of services for the entire state. From one of my questions was, how do we serve the four quarters with the limited resources? That's going to be addressed in meetings to come. And then obviously we need to address the barriers to individual access to quality and timely care behavioral health for each and every one of the counties that are impacted. Then part of the conversation was to develop the statewide care coordination and how do we set up the infrastructure? And at this point in time, it's going to be possibly telehealth. That's going to be one of the best priorities that we can put in place because I'm not having access within some of the counties to fully face-to-face services. And one of the, the last point that was addressed in that particular meeting was the services for priority populations. How do we deliver those services? And I made the point that in my county, in the San Luis County, we have individuals that live in King, Colorado, in the closest portion for them with Anta or Trenton. And even at that, when they travel there for behavioral health, there may not be the services that they need. So specialty services will be one of the things that we're going to be working on. On the very same day, we worked with, I attended the South Central TPR quarterly meeting. And one of the, I'm going to highlight just one point in there, Commissioner, because it was a little bit troublesome to me. The, there was a resolution that was presented to the group and the adoption of the same two thousand and fifty, twenty fifty Regional Transportation Plan and two thousand and fifty Public Transit and Human Services Transportation Plan. When we went through that whole thing, somewhat in, not necessarily opposition of the resolution, but I'm asking Colorado Department of Transportation and TPR group, how do we plan for two thousand and fifty when we haven't delivered, if you will, in the five intended plans? So that was a question, the resolution passed nonetheless. But one of the points, the, one of the wheresses in the points, the two thousand and fifty South Central Regional Transportation Plan and the two thousand and fifty Public Transit Human Services Transportation Plan have been completed under the authority of the South Central Regional Planning Commission and give all these statutory requirements of regional transportation plans under CRS, so on and so forth. My question to them is, this has to be a legal document because we don't know what's going to happen in two thousand and twenty-five, in two thousand and forty, much less what's going to be happening in two thousand and fifty. So nonetheless, they agree that this has to be a document. I went back to the same old song that I've been singing, Commissioners. I asked once again, Senate Bill twenty-one-two-sixty, that went out and we got collective funds for the sustainability of the transportation system, several billions of dollars that Coloradoans are paying. I want to know how those dollars have been spent throughout Colorado. And of course, they said that the program is collecting the data and C-DOT will be presenting that to us in the future months. But I've been asking for that information for quite a few years because if you have Uber Eats and they deliver, there's a fee. So they're collecting that. There is also fees that are being collected at the pump, the gas pumps. So it is, I, I believe that this time, there is going to be, I believe before the end of two thousand and twenty-five, the report is going to come out. And certainly I'm hoping and looking forward to have, I want to know, I think, no, but we want to know how the money is being spent, how much is being collected and how the state of Colorado, C-DOT is appropriating those funds? Because we have, if you walk around and drive around San Luis County, if you go up to a highway, well, that highway is entirely about some upgrades and some dollars. Also, one sixty and three fifty needs some work and so we'll continue to work on that. But that was, that was kind of the center of the conversation in the TPR meeting. On the October twenty-third, we had a meeting with the National Association of Counties on the Immigration Reform Committee. But rather than speaking about any immigration issues, the issue was, the conversation was rounded around SNAP at the national level and the shutdown of the government and so on. So that conversation went on, had the opportunity to make a couple of comments in the head of our county. And last but not least, what the, the opportunity for us, to us a community, to have the opportunity to talk about how do we do a fundraising event for constituents of our county. So that, Commissioners, would be mighty important. And so now.
I try to, one other item I'd like to add is, please be proud of the behavior of mental health. I have been invited by Bob Secot, the Director of CDA right now.
Yes.
To attend the Colorado Water Congress, and sit on the panel about mental health. And it's in relation to the legacy film that we did through CDA and CFP, if you have the opportunity, I watched the legacy video.
Let me do now a commercial, Commissioner, as we can. So there is a video that was, and this, this story came from, Commissioner Hess was featured in a documentary that went out on how behavioral health is impacting farming branch communities. And so after I watched that film, they mentioned a couple of others, though I kind of followed the links to other big suicidal impacts on the agricultural community. That, that film is so impactful that congratulations on the invitation to that, sir. And I will be, I will be hopefully attending one of Congress as well and just the opportunity to work together. And I want to make a call to all of us. At this time, we as constituents, as citizens, we need to all come together and embrace the challenges with the opportunity to have a constructive dialogue. Imperfection is what rules humanity, but I think we have an opportunity to disagree, agreeable in the law. So from that perspective, Commissioner, thank you so much. The next item, the next section that we have, how do we, we have electorally issues update. I received a message from Sheriff Nambal, he does not have any updates. Governor before mentioned, because of the elections, she's quite busy. Treasurer, anyone from the treasurer's office, the assessor's office, the secretary for quarter. Hereina, we're going to go to the next item, which is going to be publicly.
And Mr. Dorycap, Mr. Prime, good morning, sir. Please welcome and welcome you this morning, Mr. Bob Prime from the third judicial district. Good morning, sir. Please proceed.
Mr. Dorycap, good morning. I know you all know me, but for your official record, Bob Prime, Deputy Executive for the third judicial district. Just here, just to sort of register formally, the third judicial district's frustration and complaint about the ongoing elevator replacement project that is now, I think, in week fourteen, I think. I talked to my, called my boss, this is one of the chief judges of the third judicial district, and let him know that I was going to be coming out here to sort of formally register with this meeting and did he have anything he wanted me to communicate. And, you know, the fundamental tenet of a civilized society is sort of the rule of law and just this ability of all people accountable for things that they do. And the fundamental right to a trial at six months is something that he wanted me to just to point out. And we have moved, I talked to my jury commissioner this morning, six jury trials so far throughout the duration of this project. We have tried to find alternate locations to do jury trials. We've been successful in finding locations and then we get complaints by the defense bar that say that their client is not receiving a fair trial at this location. This location does not provide the structure allowed for a fair trial. They object. They don't want to waive speedy trial and so we end up with a conundrum. What do we do? Our plan has been, we're going to go forward with the trial in alternate location. Now, each and every time the defense bar has decided that the clients were going to waive speedy trial and we kick that trial under. We keep this backlog of trials that's going to be happening and at some point, it's really going to impact operations logistically because we have had them stacked pretty deep on our documents. Chief Judge is extremely frustrated. It's upended our entire operations and just as a matter of fairness, as you all probably know, the judicial department is paying for the elevator replacement. The reason they do that is because of that fundamental tenet, even though it services more than just the courts and probation, it was so important to access to justice that they said that they're going to behold up for the elevator replacement project, even though we're not the only ones serviced by the elevator. So I talked to the chief probation officer this morning, they had to make some adjustments on monitoring some of the clients that can't do the stairs. They either have to go up to them or they have to monitor them virtually, which isn't okay. These are people that have committed crimes in operation for a reason, they need to be held accountable. And he just doesn't have the resources to send folks every week to the folks out there that can't navigate the elevator. I have employees, as you know, that are working downstairs for fourteen weeks. Thank you for the space, I appreciate that, but it's not their fault. And when you have to say, take all the stuff that I think you're in need for your work.
And that is me, and I sincerely apologize.
And, you know, we don't know what all we need, the technology and we just have trouble with the internet connection every day, it's just frustrating. And that storage space with confidentiality that we're going to report needs. And we're trying to provide services to the public that, that way. The problem is we're not catching them at the front door. And I have reports of people that have amputated limbs, they have prosthetics, that have navigated the stairs, they didn't know.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, you have three minutes. And so nonetheless, I will, we're not allowed to engage in a comment. I, I am so appreciative of you coming forward because I personally agree with you.
May I just have one ask going forward?
Well, last thing.
The, when we do contracting, I would like to have the county put in a date specific for the period. I would like to have a weekly opening meetings between the county and the contractor to say what's happening for the week, what's planning. And so I think that somewhat we owe them some of that, some things are on the elevator company as well. That's my ask of the county.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prime? No, this is, that would be, Mr. Dorycap, I think at this point in time, we will be addressing those points throughout the rest of the meeting. So surely, thank you so much. Thank you. The, the next item that we have here, anyone online that would wish to address this work under Commissioners at this time, you will have three minutes. Hereina, we're going to go to the next item, which is going to be section nine, consideration of nine A, consideration of IFB twenty-five-C zero-zero-seven, or House three-wheel move and planting. Mr. Dorycap?
Commissioner, before you for your consideration, it's IFB twenty-five-C zero-zero-seven, or House three-wheel, planting some new trees with the following results. Front range, hard risk seventeen thousand four hundred eighty dollars, wise tree service, four thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars, ZED excavation fifteen thousand fifty dollars, H2 management, ten thousand one hundred dollars. I, in the submission of H2s that they identified to their court comp and their liability insurance was expired, so I contacted them, emailed and also over the phone and talked to the person who had, whose name's on this bill and asked them for those documents, they said they did those to me. First was a bit of discussion as to whether or not they need them, come with you, if you have more than one employee working on that project, they've got to be careful about working or any employee, you have to be careful about comp. And if it's a simple prior, they can prove that, then they don't necessarily even have a way, but there's, there's always questions, how are you going to keep from damaging, especially the park, not the park, but the venture where this metal tree is, if it's a one-person operation? I've not received apply, or the apply from the mesa of this meeting this morning. So my opinion is H2 rates the event management's supplemental was non-compliant. The second company, wise tree service, four thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars, that's my recommendation at the board. Though with that company, they media walk around with all their employees, let's say me myself and Major Supervisor Ken Bowden, I think last minute before. A local vendor, ZED excavation, excavation fifteen thousand fifty dollars. I consider five percent breakfast points to producer bid, not producer bid, but adjustments to their bid and would be fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty cents, which is still considered over the. five cents, which is still a similar for the Wise Trees business note, they also did not submit work comp paper, I talked to them, they said they would give us work comp paper if they were awarded a bid, and submitted work comp information, other insurance information is supposed to be submitted with the bid, and I notice within their city's license that they have on there that they are exempt, or they received a waiver apparently, because it's a one-person operation. And again, one same question to them was, the same with H2, are you going to do this work on damage, or the venture, etc. But again, even considering the preference points, they're still on the Wise Trees. So that's worth, it would be myself to award this bid to Wise Tree Service, the amount of twelve thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars, and what we pay for from our fund, from our ballots of the zero escape eighty-eight, might as well be forty-four thousand one hundred seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And if this award is worth, if this bid is worth to Wise, that amount should be thirty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-five cents. So we've still got money in the pot to pay for this stuff, and I've also reached out to our zero escape contractor, a design builder, I should say, not designer, but designer, about what we're going to do with the Wise Tree Center, and the impact of some of those costs, to try and split this balance.
I have a question. So if they damage the grass out here, and apparently they're going to come in from the top corner with that lift, and if they damage our sidewalk or the lawn, are they going to fix that, or is that part?
We can go, this won't require a bond because it's underneath the state statutory eleven hundred fifty thousand dollars, I believe is that cut off, but I don't know, I guess we'll pursue if they can take it out of that final thing, if we have to do repairs or encourage them to make repairs. And I think, when we spoke with the, you have a lot they had thought about doing this recently, if they maybe talk about walking off some of the streets of the outskirts, so actually bring a crane in of some sort, and do their little level to minimize any kind of damages to the grass and the nature.
This is just the bid, though, this isn't the contract, right?
I'm sorry?
This is just the bid, not the contract.
This will be a contract, because our contract, our bid also is a contract, I think it's particle one, something like that.
On that footnote, counsel, I believe, because it is, sounds like a simple operation, but yet the complexities and the hazards for employees and county property, I would like to, if I'm allowed by my fellow commissioners, who, they will decide, and I want a visit with counsel on this, to look at the language of the contract, to make sure that in the event that there is any damages to county property, that that is also covered.
Well, then I.
Oh, yes, sir.
If I may?
You may, absolutely.
In the devil's Africa, how are we going to define damage, because if a tree, if a branch falls, sticks in the grass, causes a debt like this, maybe our services, why does that mean damage?
No, I'm actually referring back to Commissioner Has by the energy, by maybe a piece of equipment, and there is concrete that's made the fracture, is that a responsibility? I think it may, it may work, but again, I'm making a recommendation, it's up to you other commissioners, if you believe that that would be proper, otherwise, I would even in the motion, put any additional conversation to Mr. Dornikamp at this time.
I would table this, the IFB twenty-five C zero zero seven for our three rule planting.
So we're going to table that and move into a second session, correct?
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Seale?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dornikamp. Consideration of the Venture Foundation Rural Cowboys Grant, back to you, Mr. Dornikamp.
Commissioner, before you for your consideration is, the Venture Foundation Rural Cowboys Grant, in cooperation, collaboration with the great campus, the campus submitted a grant request, and it was awarded about seventy-five hundred dollars from the Venture Foundation for communication studies throughout the county to see how best to communicate with our residents, and so I asked the board to approve this, and there was supposed to be a document signed saying to Professor Lopez, and also to myself, I never even received it.
I have ideas.
Okay, so I guess it's still pending somewhere, so the board flees us off contact. The individual who is managing this venture grant for the Venture Foundation to see if they can't submit that document to Professor Lopez, who did that sign.
Thank you, Mr. Dornikamp, thank you for finding us the right authority for agreeing to do the reporting on this grant, is one of those community partnerships that I think is going to be a Sunday, so thank you, thank you for that. So, Commissioner, are there any questions on this item nine B? Here we go, I would enter a motion to approve the Venture Foundation Rural Cowboys Grant.
Second.
Commissioner Seale?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Consideration of Millig CO eight, back to you, Mr. Dornikamp.
Commissioner, before you for your consideration is, no exchange order in the break, that is our assigned bill contractor, the Odeation Act that has worked into changing out the pop wire, this is part of the pop wire upgrade in addition to, brought to our attention, our emergency lighting systems are functional, so in addition to changing out the pop wire, if the pop wire does go to these emergency lights, it will, there will be some other usages of these funds that won't necessarily be able to be recovered from, excuse me, we've got people trying to get in, it'll be in addition to the pop wire costs, but I asked the board to approve this.
Thank you, sir. And how close are we to meeting that project?
As per the meeting yesterday, we think it will be another part of the next, if there are any losses, but there'll be another change order coming tomorrow at your next meeting for work in the base.
So is it the change order for the three hundred and five dollars?
Uh, yeah, I think the change.
I have three and I have four hundred and thirty-five each, at thirteen hundred and five. Commissioner, are there any questions on this change order? Here we go, I would enter a motion.
Move to approve the CO eight, change order for one thousand three hundred and five dollars. Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Seale?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. I have nine D, consideration of CCOM, Advanced Car Robber, and Meek Grant Program Application for the town of Starkville, Dornikamp.
Commissioner Seale, there we go, I'm trying to monitor these folks who are coming in this meeting late. I don't know who they are, and we have long, I'm not sure that they're satisfied with the, I'm not sure what their purpose, activity is, or because, I, South East Communications has approached the county about running their support for installation of high and, I should say, high ski in the town of Starkville, CCOM, who is.
Yeah, my wife, my wife, my wife, my wife.
As I said, I apologize.
Glad you were ready.
Well, I didn't get this present. I thought maybe they were going to attempt to hear what's, I don't know, first sight.
Recording in progress.
What was your own number?
Is this me?
Maybe Christmas.
Yeah.
And no one else would be allowed in the room, and I hate to do this, but I guess it's certain, I'm a person.
Thank you, Mr. Dornikamp, chances, we apologize for the interruption of a very unfortunate situation, so we were talking about the item, the nine D consideration of CCOM, Advanced Car Robber, and Meek Grant Program Application for the town of Starkville and Lero Support or.
Commissioner, just a moment, we'll finish up. CCOM is historically, excuse me, SCID has historically, I don't know, I'm not sure, I guess there's some trouble on SCID, so CCOM, we should have this, give a record for this property.
Thank you, and thank you for any of the better, are there any questions for Mr. Dornikamp? No questions, I would enter a motion.
Move to approve the CCOM Advanced Car Robber, and Meek Grant Program Application for the town of Starkville. Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Seale?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Nine D, consideration of a medic field, Mr. Dornikamp.
Commissioner, before you for your consideration is, our fuel bid twenty twenty-five, NCH zero zero four, for the purchase of eight thousand gallons, we deliver eight thousand thousand hundred of fuel, we deliver to our fuel farm at the fairgrounds, and the following results, oil field two point zero two four one dollars per gallon, standard price sixteen thousand one hundred ninety dollars, A C S A, port control, two dollars seven cents per gallon, standard price sixteen thousand five hundred sixty dollars, a hundred value of two point three three dollars per gallon, standard price eighteen thousand sixty four dollars. And I asked the board to award this to the oil field, price of two point zero two four million dollars per gallon, standard price sixteen thousand one hundred ninety dollars in A C S.
Sir, any questions, commissioners? I would enter a motion.
Move to approve, let a fuel bid be awarded to oil fields at two dollars and twenty, two point zero two four dollars per gallon, sixteen thousand one hundred ninety-two. Second.
Commissioner Seale?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Consideration of OBCC number seven zero three ninety-two, Captain Jake Bell for in one, and twelve forty-four, one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents, and we have Treasurer who has, Martinez, I don't know if there are any questions for her, on this OBCC? There you come. The documents are attached to this particular, on this particular document, but I think it's. Good morning. Good morning. How are you?
Fine, fine, all right. Any questions regarding these? We have several.
Yes.
In line.
And I'm glad that you are enjoying yourselves this morning. Was this double assessed, or is that not what happened?
These were, they were double assessed, they should not have gone to tax sale, we should have been, no tax sale, because there was a note on them, so that, but these two were kept down, so they were sold in air by owners. So we were requesting to remit her, back to her that she was the owner of the taxes.
And I'm sure you had that conversation with her?
Yes, she was, she was in agreement to this, so that we don't have problems, they run down the line, before we get to the D two process, though we have a fifty dollar that had to go to her.
Any other clarification for Bishop Matthews? Here we go, I would enter a motion.
Move to approve OBCC number seven zero thirty-nine to Captain Jake Bell for in twelve forty-four, one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents. Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Seale?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. And we have a nine D, consideration of OBCC number seven zero four zero to Captain Jake Bell for in twelve forty-one, for seventy-one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and forty-eight cents.
That's also the same, yes, same in South America, so in air.
Move to approve OBCC number seven forty-one to Captain Jake Bell for in twelve forty-one, for one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and forty-eight cents. Second.
Commissioner Seale?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Yes. Nine D, consideration of OBCC seven zero four one to Charles Michael Patterson for two hundred and thirteen thousand eleven cents. Any questions for Bishop Matthews?
That account was sold also in air, when he was searching before he applied for a deed, with the assessor's office, the assessors agreed to him that that account was not an valid account, so it got sold, there's actually two investors on there, that Mr. Patterson is on, as well as William Merlin, both were investors on that property, but there is no property, so that's why we're requesting to remit them back to those two investors.
Thank you. Any additional information needed to make a motion, commissioners? Here we go, I would enter a motion.
Move to approve OBCC seven forty-one to Charles Michael Patterson for two hundred thirteen, two hundred and thirteen dollars and seven cents. Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Seale?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Nine I, consideration of OBCC seven zero four two to William J. Merlin for one seventy-five, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Fisher Martinez, rockers, do that again.
That's also on that same account, that the account does not exist per the assessor's office, who is also sold, so this investor is like the second investor who purchased that same land, but it does not exist per the assessor's office.
Thank you, then.
I would enter a motion. Move to approve OBCC seven forty-two to William J. Merlin for one hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Second.
Commissioner Seale?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Nine J, consideration of OBCC seven zero four three two, Cytrio for one forty-three
This account, Mr. Trivio picked that up at our tax sale, he's held the tax lien, when he's not ready to apply, he cannot apply because the assessor's office has now deleted that account, and it provided it back to an original account, so that account is now deleted and can't go forward with the D two process or treasure statement.
So this has returned back to the.
So, yes, everything that he has been, for tax certificate.
Thank you, Professor Matthews. Any questions, I would enter a motion.
Move to approve OBCC seventy. I will approve O B C C seventy forty three to Cytrio for one hundred and forty three dollars and twenty six cents?
Second motion.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner sir?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Ninety eight consideration of O B C C seven zero four four to James and Julia for this for four hundred and twenty five dollars and forty three cents?
This, what I'm asking for you all to purchase is a mobile home and its value is under twenty thousand dollars, which the assessors don't assess anymore. But this has several years of back taxes that it's just not, they've never had paid. Goes all the way back to twenty, oh, that two thousand nine, a lot of big taxes. It's just sitting there on the books.
So
It's no longer being assessed because its value is under the twenty thousand.
And that's only the dwelling, not the property?
It's just the mobile home, yes. And that account also was deleted. I don't even know if that mobile home is located on the hill, but the account itself was a deleted account. It's just taxes under out there remaining. Better, okay. So we can purge that amount, get that, not off the books.
Well, thank you for doing all the research. Appreciate it. If there's any questions for pressure Martinez? Here and now, I will enter a motion.
Move to approve O B C C seven forty four to James and Julia for this for four hundred and twenty five dollars, forty three cents?
Second.
Commissioner sir?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving
You too.
Ninety eight consideration of supplemental nutritional funding. We have, uh,
Commissioner also could use senior executive session to, to, to choose to take the assignment as a special, see if we're going to have a meeting there. You could work with the special, you need to, to go.
I think, sir, uh, I believe that's a proper step, but commissioners, any, uh, any opposition to table this item and move this to executive session? Then I'll enter a motion.
Move to, uh, table, I have now, some additional funding.
Second motion.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner sir?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes. Ninety eight consideration of, uh, G B A T M agreement, Mr. Brown, Captain.
Commissioners, at your prior meeting, the board, the board of the R and Q to, for replacement of an A T M on first floor next to the vending machine to G B A T R. This is the contract.
And I want to thank you so much for asking this through counsel and, uh, telling us that the recommended changes and requests in English have been included. And for that, are there any questions, commissioners, on this particular agreement? Here and now, then I will enter a motion.
Move to approve J B, uh, G B A T M agreement.
Commissioner sir?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes. Uh, this is a part part section of international. Consideration of the available deals for the second half of October two thousand and twenty five. Uh, good morning, finance and regulatory authority.
Good morning. Uh, pay was about October thirty first, twenty twenty five. It's two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and sixty six cents. Do you have any questions on payroll? Invoices eight, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Three hundred sixty four thousand, two hundred twenty seven dollars and ninety cents. Uh, let's see. Bolton and Inc., uh, this is for, um, F A grant nineteen, four thousand twenty four dollars. This is for the design. Um, let's see. The share of the vehicle lease that we have, I think this is year two, four hundred twelve thousand one eighteen sixty three. Um, looks like they have some gravel and most crushing or was the purchase of gravel from the only percent of gravel for one hundred, one hundred eighty thousand, forty dollars. TK Elevator, this is the retainage of thirteen thousand six sixty two ninety, we're holding it until that elevator is complete.
So on that question, uh, I do have a question for Mr. Brown, Captain, of the retainage of thirteen thousand six sixty two ninety. Uh, this particular check will be released upon total condition inspections and one hundred percent function of the elevator.
Yes, correct.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anything I may ask, which are questions on?
No, and I guess another follow up question on that is the, uh, the expected time of delivery on this piece of equipment that is creating a bit of a headache for us or in U of R rights in that day of last quarter.
As of yesterday, the inspector that is a third party, of course, with the state to do these inspections. Everything was as fast that has been worked on to date. What is issued is barely in statute and even inspector gave you printout of statute. It requires that spring, that any time that there is a hydraulic system that functions the car, the elevator, that there has to be a sprinkler system where the hydraulic oil is a potential hole system that break, um, for what they call echo pit where the car comes down, um, it's, um, at the first floor level. And our ability is not a sprinkler system. And we worked up the scope of work for TK Elevator to do the work. I hopped that and threw it in there. I don't recall that being in there, but I have correspondence along with TK right now regarding that. And in memory surgery, I please understand why my memories like this happened over a year ago, but I believe at the time, the state inspector at that time, we had an oil leak, which caused us a problem that the state inspector was not going to certify the usage of that elevator. It would work unless we got out of the oil leak, uh, leak fixed, uh, oil leak, things like that. It also requires us to upgrade the elevator, just similar to what E D A is where if you go on to remodel a piece of a old building and it's not compliant, you have to bring the E D A compliance. And that's where this all started from way back when. And at the time, I believe the reason we chose TK was because it's a, in my opinion, and I think the board's opinion at the time, sort of a specialized, specialized to work. And there was no other company that dared to come and get to you, look at either one of the elevators, not only here at DHS, but also we're at, uh, our health department who sent TK. So, when TK, the work was supposed to have started after election last year. That didn't happen. We kept and head back and forward the board, all communications that have happened to TK have, uh, I've been negative to my job, I've tried to get them all ready to get this project done. And please bring that to my attention. And as far as the deadline, there wasn't a deadline put in there because it wasn't a formal bid. And again, TK was one of that. My belief was I could do the work and see if familiar with the elevator.
The, so even all that was thrown down, uh, today. Where, again, I know your communication with them, um, TK being so specialized, would they not have been the worst, made recognition of the summer's county that a sprinkler system was going to be needed simply because, uh, as you mentioned, bringing that to the new code, I believe that they should have been the worst, bring that to our attention. Therefore, the car is parked and we don't know if it's going to run hot. I'm sure it's operable, but you know, on a day like, uh, like today, where we're having an election, this is to do it, you know, very fair. So keep the conversation going, keep the board abreast of what's happening. And certainly, uh, the disappointment comes, you know, with, uh, just the communication, uh, from, uh, the installer, like the county.
Commissioner, they've not really the one or two employees of St. Paul, just our contracts up there. And I, and I brought that to their attention. Uh, my opinion was that this should have been part of the work. We rely on their expertise to tell us what needs to be done with the elevator, you know, the ancillary, um, pieces of equipment to bring this to your elevator compliance. And I have not responded back yet from my text to be able to communicate about that, except the fact is that they were going to turn the car on, the elevator on until we were being full, and so we're going to service again.
It looks like to me that as old as this building is, that we have what we have to deal with, that there might have been a possible grandfather clause for our elevator. I'm wondering if, if they would research that, they would see that.
Commissioner, you bring up, you bring up a really good point. Um, in addition to that sprinkler system, in that you have a solar floor and a catch basin, and then also a sump pump and a way to get water, if water or oil happens to get into that, that an depression or car to get the water out, um, count the building. You bring up a good point. The inspector said that perhaps what we could do is once, even when we already issued a permit, that perhaps then we could look at pursuit of variance to the sprinkler system because of the age of the structure, the fact that there is sprinkler system anywhere throughout this structure, and then also the way to try and get water on the sump pump that's pumping. We've got no way of doing that short of, you know, through first floor, you know, the facetious here, now somebody's winning in the garden house. I don't know how we do that. So first, first, uh, what the inspector said, that's the permit. You say you need communication with the state, the, uh, obviously works as a third party with the state was going to try and do that yesterday in order to get that accomplished.
And no, there's for them to take, and they knew that we had elections coming.
Commissioner, they knew, they, they, of course, they had elections, they, everything, I thought we, we reached a milestone and they finally said approval on here because we had been communicating with them since the end of election last year, even before the election of last year, said, okay, you guys are set because this was part of their agreement verbally. That wasn't in the scope of work. It should go to start your work after the, um, last election. And we paid, I don't know, half of the, the bill, um, like shortly after the election of last year, maybe even before, so they could get all the materials that we needed. And then we paid additionally to that. Once the materials came in, suppose, and then we're in somewhere else in Denver, ended up paying another, I don't know, eighty percent of the balance that was there, it is, and then we kept reminding, well, we already paid for all this, we can't get any work done down here. Just seems a bit frustrating, um, as an understatement. Maybe we just kind of bid, I don't know.
Underfunded set order for our request, new deal is final.
Sure. No, and then I, I tell you what, the, the, toward the, the, it's just about the, uh, for a community that has a main focus, uh, World County Commissioners, remaining a solid, uh, time of, uh, operation, uh, has been a bit challenging, particularly with the ground count for that. And, uh, simply I just wanted to, the retainage, uh, hopefully we can, uh, come to a solution ASAP. This is going a bit too long. It's certainly, we appreciate that. That's back to your finance, Mr. Brown.
That was all, Captain.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
There are, I will have any questions and thank you once again, uh, to me, to us, the, uh, uh, all the, what goes on around the county, who comes to the power lines. So thank you for what they're doing. And even on the gravel crushing, I know the border bridge have, they've, they've said you're working with built and all the other funds to, uh, make that operation whole. And even to a certain extent, the, uh, the hope of, one of the conversations that we're going to be entertaining that N A C O is to increase, uh, tilt, hopefully, I mean, and this is the conversation for them here. And of course, I'm all for that, right? We want to have, uh, that opportunity to, uh, bring those counties, uh, in a great capacity in this challenging time. So thank you so much. Commissioner, any other questions on the finance? Here and now, I will enter a motion.
Move to approve the payment bills presented now, October twenty twenty five?
Second motion.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner sir?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes. Uh, at this time, uh, these four county commissioners will be suspended to enter into executive session under C R S twenty four six four two four B, becoming a decision relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, without strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators. Uh, we have item A contracts, uh, we're going to move consideration of item B twenty five C zero zero seven, or has to be removed or abandoned to executive session, as well as consideration of supplemental impression of funding, uh, that would be the third item of this. And at this time, I will enter a motion to enter into executive session suspended review with about, uh, thirty minutes.
Second.
Commissioner sir?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes, thank you.